Okay, I'm gonna call our village board meeting for February 7th, 2023. Order please. Roll call.
Gary Hertzberg.
Here.
Sam Kaufman.
Here.
Erin Moran.
Here.
Chris Selner.
Here.
Bill Random.
Here.
Phil Willam.
Here.
Nyla Guy.
Here.
Okay, first item is confirmation of open meeting compliance.
And the public postings and official notices and online availability were confirmed posted.
Perfect, thank you. Then we have our consent agenda. Would anybody like anything told or I look for a motion?
I'll move to approve consent agenda.
Second. Motion by trustee Moran, seconded by trustee Kaufman. Any other comments? Call a question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Poo, ayes have it. Next, we have our public comment section. Is there's anybody here who would like to make a comment on anything on or off the agenda?
We have two public comments. Tim Kiefer.
So after I just told Diane that she should speak from the podium, I'm just gonna speak from here because it's just my two-minute public comment. I did, I'm just speaking purely as an individual, it's nothing to do with my role as a county board member about the pool. I, I would like to have a pool in Wannakee is basically the, the point. As I was driving over here, I was thinking you on village board get to decide how to build a pool, we on county board get to decide how to build a jail. So you basically think I should have run for village board because I'd much rather have the job of deciding how to build a pool. I learned how to swim about the same time I learned how to walk. It's wonderful exercise, wonderful recreation, obviously kids love it. And what's frustrated me living here in the village is I've been a member of the pool at Shorewood Hills for the past several years because there is no public pool here in the village that I can join. It always has seemed weird living here in Wannakee to be a member of the Shorewood Hills pool. I'd much rather be a member in the summertime for an outdoor pool that's here in Wannakee. In the wintertime, I do swim at the high school, but we don't have an outdoor pool. And so what I'm saying is, I understand those questions about location. I, I just urge you not to fall into a, can sometimes be this analysis paralysis where there's different choices and it's hard to make a decision and then the pool never gets built. I really would like to, to have a pool, if possible, for that pool to be outside because we already do have an indoor pool at the high school. And with that, I appreciate you listening to my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we have one more that is a written comment that they would like me to read. So this is from Tim LaTerno, sorry if I mispronounced. With respect to the agreement review, new business item number three between the village and durst property owners, the agreement should involve a permanent fence placed on the property line of the durst property along the trail. The fence should be installed on or before the start of construction of the, of the trail. Who maintains the fence should be defined and the fence should not be a barbed wire fence. And no comments.
Okay. That was everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else that would like to address the board? Okay, then we'll move on. First item we have is a presentation update from our state representative Diane Hasselmann.
I'll go.
Hi there. Thanks so much for inviting me today. It's really great to see all of you sometime, some of you for the first time, like actually seeing your faces. So appreciate you serving. I started out in local government. I think I first ran for Middleton Cross Plains School Board in 2005. I did that till 2008. Then I ran for Dane County Board where I had the pleasure of working with Supervisor Kiefer for a few years before being elected to the State Assembly in 2012. And I miss those decisions, these pool decisions, these local decisions. More importantly, I miss voting yes a lot of times, but it really is where you really can make the most difference in people's lives. So I just want to say to all of you, thank you so much for putting your name on the ballot and for serving our area. Thank you. Good news for you, I have a few things I'm gonna pass out just to let you know, things that have happened that impact Wannakee over the last couple of years now. But just want to give you an update on money. Everyone wants to know. Last month, the nonpartisan Legislative Fiscal Bureau released new projections indicating the state general fund balance will have 3.8 billion surplus at the end of 2021-23 biennium. And that's about, and that's about 2.9 billion more than what we thought. So this is great news for the state of Wisconsin. So when you advocate for more funding for roads, which you always do, or, you know, levy limit increases or whatever, you should keep up the pressure because there is money out there. Governor Evers came up with a plan that invest nearly 1.7 billion of the projected revenue surplus to provide a $150 surplus refund to every Wisconsin resident and also investing 750 million in education while holding the line on property taxes. It was exciting. It was, I thought it was brilliant. I'm not sure if it's gonna happen, be very honest with you, but I think it was very well thought out. But we do have some information on Wannakee and I am, I think, hmm, do I have this as a handout or not? Maybe not. But I wanted you to know about the badger bounce back federal dollars that were distributed to Wannakee because you ha, I had a lot of businesses during the pandemic that were reaching out to me asking for help. Thank goodness, we had a great website. People could go on and apply for these grants. So we're, um, we had, we're all in grants, Wisconsin Tomorrow Grants, Lodging Awards, Wisconsin Rental Assistance Program, cultural grants, awards. Friends of Schumacher Farm got one, Friends of Wisconsin Singers. There are 482 grants distributed to small businesses in Wannakee. Some of them, Lake Life Candle, Luna Pet Resort, Mad City Mulch, Lone Girl Brewing, Wannakee Veterinarian Clinic, Wisconsin Agricultural Exports, Van Go Taxi, Integrated Physical Therapy, Green Stripe Lawns, Fortify Fitness, Focus Photography, Drumlidge Winery, loved that winery, Blue Sky Flight, Willow's Tavern, Wannakee, and so many others. But I just want to say that was money well spent and money well used. As far as everything else happening, we are in the final throes of session, which means it is silly season. You will see all sorts of strange bills being proposed at the end of session. I believe our last session day will be March 10th. We'll see. We can come back in April. I'm always a big believer that we should keep working. Local government doesn't stop working. I never know why the state thinks it should. So I'm hopeful we can change that because it's important things come up. You know, during the pandemic, we didn't meet for like eight or nine months, which was a missed opportunity. We could have been helping so many people during that time. And with that, I'm just gonna open it up for questions if that's okay with you. People have, you know, lots of good things going on. I will say I, I am looking at signing on to which bill is it? Senate Bill 835, I forgot to mention this to Todd. It's a bill that, it seems like the Wisconsin Towns Association and the League of Wisconsin Municipalities agree on. I do not see that often, so whenever I see that the two agree, I'm always taking a look at to it. But it's a compromise bill about zoning. It modifies the number of statutory tools that municipalities use when interacting with each other. And it relieves tension, which I think is a wonderful thing. So that will hopefully be coming to the State Assembly soon. And with that, happy to take your questions.
Board members, I'll open it up to you all first. Gary? If you have any.
No, I think, I mean, I think we know some of the concerns about roads with 113 and Arboretum and 113. Those, that intersection north of town, it sounds like they're on the docket to be addressed. So I think that, from a state standpoint, was great news for us because it really deals with two, you know, pretty areas that we need to improve. So we appreciate that support.
Perfect. Nyla, any questions? Diane? Bill?
No.
Erin?
No, thanks for calling in.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Well, just so you know, my number at work is 608-266-5340. If you have something else that maybe you think about in the middle of the night, it rings the Capitol, not to me. And we'd be happy to help. So just know that it really is an honor to serve each and every one of you in the village of Wannakee. I thank the world of you guys and appreciate the time.
Thank you for advocating for all of our citizens.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
My privilege.
And Gary brought up one highway. We also have the other section out here, State Highway going out, and that's also on the docket. So thank you for helping to push those forward.
You bet. Thanks so much, everybody.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, first public hearing item we have is public hearing and discussion action on a request to rezone 604 East Main Street from C2 Highway Commercial to C1 General Commercial to allow a wider range of tenants. Who's, Tim, have you got this one? Go ahead.
Thanks, Chair Zoller. Very quickly, the property owner at 604 East Main is making this request for the rezoning. The rezoning would allow a wider range of uses as well as render those uses that are currently there more, more in conformance with our, our current zoning code. The rezoning to C1 is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The Plan Commission recommended approval of the request and staff is recommending approval as well.
Okay, then I'm gonna open up the public hearing for anybody who'd like to speak on this topic, if there is anyone. Do we have any forms turned in? No? Okay, anybody who would like to speak on this topic? Okay, hearing done. I'm going to close our public hearing. Board members' comments, questions? Concerns?
I'd make a motion to approve the request to rezone the property at 604 East Main Street from C2 to C1 zoning.
Second.
Motion by Sam Kaufman, seconded by Phil Willam. Any other comments? Call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poo, ayes have it. Next public hearing item we have is public hearing and discussion action on a request by Forward Development Group on behalf of Division Investors LLC for an amendment to the general development plan of the Woodland Crest Platte to allow automotive repair on Lot 3 of CSM 15534, 2820 Sarah Lane. So before we get started on this one, I recused myself on this previously. I have to recuse myself again on this for not, I guess, what do we call it? Because my employer...
Out of an abundance of caution, I would say, and related to your employer and Kramer Development Corporation and the relationship between the two.
Perfect. So we need to have somebody run this portion of the meeting?
Mr. Hertzberg would be very good at that.
I second.
Okay, so we got a motion to second for Gary to run it. Is everybody, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Poo, ayes have it.
Isn't democracy great?
All right, with that, I guess we'll open the public hearing.
Gary, do you want to send a big presentation?
Yeah, go ahead, Tim, if you're into a presentation first.
Sure, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Hertzberg? The applicant is seeking approval of an amendment to the Woodland Crest GDP to allow an amount of automotive maintenance and repair use by right at the, at 2820 Sarah Lane. This is the southwest corner of Sarah Lane and Simon Crestway. When the GDP was originally approved, a range of appropriate uses was contemplated for this development node. However, this particular use was excluded from that. So the applicant is now asking for this use to be included as a, a use by right only on this lot, Lot 3 of CSM 15534. Staff is, has some concern, as you may recall, recently the, the village board approved a GDP amendment to allow a 78-unit multifamily residential building immediately to the south. However, the Joint Plan Commission and Plan Commission both recommended approval of the request. Staff is recommending approval of the request. However, consistent with the Plan Commission and Joint Plan Commission recommendation is that the use be permitted as a conditional use, not by right. So with that, I would turn it back to the board. Just one other, one other thing too. Cindy Rich with Christian Brothers is here this evening and available to answer questions.
All right, thank you, Tim.
Did you?
No, no, I think you just got, yep, yep.
Okay, I guess then I will open the public hearing. Is there anybody out there? There's any comments? Cindy, I don't know if you want to say anything.
If you have any questions, I'm available for anything you may have.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing. Comments from the board? Maybe Nyla, we can start down there if you have any comments, questions?
Okay, I, I guess I have the same concern that staff had about having a 78-unit multifamily project south of this lot. I, I just think when I'm in my home, I, there are some activities that I would rather not have going on in the, you know, area, the noise, the, you know, outdoor maintenance, perhaps smells. I don't know, you know, to what extent these would be happening. So that is one of my concerns, are the, is for the residents that would be living in the area.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So that's a very valid concern. We've actually reached out to the multifamily development developers and I believe we submitted that letter. They wrote an email in support of this project based on our use. And then also as far as noise, our noise, that we've done some sound studies on existing ones that are open. And we run about 50 to 55 decibels. Simon Crestway from the transportation maps has the noise of about 50 to 55 decibels. And Highway Q is 60 to 70 decibels. So at that, that multifamily complex, the, the biggest sound generator for them is gonna be the road noise, not the automotive repair shop. Another thing about our locations is we're only open from 7:00 to 6:00. The first 180 days that the, the facility is open, we're open on Saturdays just to get the business up and running. But after that, we're only open Monday through Friday. So as a general statement for the, the people living there, it, it, it'll be operating during work hours and closed on the weekends. So it doesn't necessarily generate anything that would disturb residents. And then as far as outdoor facilities and things like that, we don't do any repairs outdoor. We don't do any storage outdoor. So you won't really see anything other than, you know, when we're operating, if we had bay doors open or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
No?
I'm the only person that voted against this on the planning commission. And I did so simply because the folks at DCAR came to me and said that they were told there was absolutely no way they could open there and we shouldn't be considering that. But they didn't come to the planning commission or anything. They, their, their no came from staff. So that's it.
Okay, Bill?
So I, I think there's one on Sun Prairie, is that correct?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
So is that, so is it chain? Is that what we're talking about? I mean, I don't understand the...
Yeah, so there's a, we have roughly 240, give or take. I think we've got a little more than that now. Locations across the country, we're in about 35-ish states. So, you know, we have quite a bit of locations. The Sun Prairie location is more standard to our prototype. The look of what we're proposing here would really more match with the rest of the buildings in that Woodcrest development. So that, there were some renderings presented, so the look of it will be a little different than that to kind of match more the area.
So is, and I'm sorry, the, the, the concrete asphalt areas, the whole lot basically, you know, setting like that, or how?
Yeah, so we still have landscaped, there's some landscape islands that we proposed in the site, site plan as well as the, there is landscaping around the exterior borders on Sarah Lane and Simon Crest.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Erin.
I guess my comments, questions kind of echo what Phil had mentioned. Like, does this set precedent for any of our other businesses? We have Lane Paces right next to Auto Repair, Collision Masters, I think, I just didn't know how that falls in.
So I think this, since this is a GDP, it's really reviewed and evaluated on its own, so it shouldn't set a precedent. I think it sets a precedent to the extent that you would, I guess, allow it. But as I pointed out, the original GDP did not, did not contemplate this use and excluded it for some reason. But now the applicant is, is wishing to, I guess, flip, flip that switch. And, oh, just want something, point out too, is the, the GDP amendment would be only applicable to this one lot? And just to note as well, prior to any construction, approval of an SIP would be needed. And that would come back before the Plan Commission as well, so.
Okay, I guess that was kind of my question, that whole area, but...
Sam?
Well, you know, with the Sun Prairie location, it's across the street from a residential apartment building. I know people that live there and they don't have a problem with smells or anything like that. And they said Christian Brothers is a great neighbor, so I expect to love the same here.
Good. Just one quick response to the point that Phil made about the prior discussions with DCAR. They did consult with staff about that area of the village for a location. And the staff answer was, not as currently zoned, could they be located in that location? And we laid out for the DCAR applicant the process, which now you see moving through process and what that would, the process, the timing and the requirements to go through those steps. My interpretation was that timing was more of an issue for them and they were in search of a site that was gonna be able to move forward more quickly for them. So that was the conversation staff had with DCAR.
Nyla, go ahead.
I have another question. You, you said that there was a specific amount of time that the facility would be open on Saturdays. What would keep the company from making a decision not to keep it open past those number of days?
We, that's just our operating standard. We don't have any locations that have kept open on Saturdays after the 180 days.
Okay.
That's an agreement that the franchisee makes with us when we actually, you know, do our contracts with them. That's part of the agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Just to, to, to comment on Nyla's comments and also something that Sam said, and I know something the Plan Commission said. When the Plan Commission voted in favor of this, I think one of the things that impressed them was the information that was shared by Christian Brothers and the information that was in the application regarding architecture, business hours, things of that nature. And so one thing to consider as you're looking at your motion right now, so your recommended motion, it looks like, is on page, page 69. If it is relevant to the board, the presentation that Christian Brothers has, has made and, and it's important that what happens on that property is consistent with Christian Brothers' application, you could add to your motion right at the end with, with standards of conditional use to include auto maintenance and repair business to be operated consistent with the Christian Brothers' application. So I think that would get at the, you know, to make sure that if you're gonna allow this as a conditional use, that the Christian Brothers understands that they're gonna be, you know, the application was impressive, the architecture's impressive. If this is approved by the village board, that is the expectation and that's gonna be what's required under the zoning change.
Okay. I, I just know that I drive that way a lot over the last number of years. And I don't know people like Sam do that live there, but I've always been impressed with the, you know, just the overall operation. You know, it's clean, everything is, looks great there, the building is attractive. And I think, like Sam probably said, they're probably good neighbors for the people around them.
So are you, is it major auto or is it like?
So our, our typical business is, is gonna be considered minor. We don't do any sort of collision, body painting, tire recapping, the things that are typically really loud. We don't do those types of operations now.
Okay.
I guess one more question. I'm not sure if I'm just missing this or if it's not available yet. Is this presumably gonna be up and running before the apartment is filled or...
I'm not sure what the timing is on the apartment.
So I did speak to the developer last week of the apartment. Their intention is to submit an SIP fairly soon. So I think knowing that it's likely that the apartment will begin construction sooner, but due to the size of the project, it's unknown which will, which one will prevail.
Around similar times.
I would, I would imagine if we're getting appro, if we were to move forward and we got approved roughly the same time, we would be open, open before them just for construction timeline.
Right.
Our water management will be okay with this?
Sorry?
It just looks like we're getting a lot of pavement there. We have enough retention to hold.
Yeah, there's, I think that this would make use of, their retention basins on the east side of Simon Crestway, across the street are part of that regional, that, that development.
And we've, we've got access to the master plan studies and so our design would be incorporated to make sure that we meet all of the pavement, or I think there's some impervious cover, we're allowed and we'll meet all those criteria.
Thank you.
Does anyone have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
And did we want to include the language that Brian discussed?
Where's it at?
Here. What I added isn't what he said.
A motion to approve, I moved to approve the amendment to the general development plan for Woodland Crest to allow automotive maintenance and repair use on Lot 3 of CSM 15534 within the Woodland Crest Platte as a conditional use.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Did, call a question. Did we want to add Brian?
Well, that, that's up to you. I mean, right now, that, right now, what I said is not part of the motion. If you want to add it, I can read it again to you or state it again, but you would need to add it if you want me, do you want me to read it again?
Read it, please.
Sure.
With, with, with standards of the conditional use to include that the auto maintenance and repair business be operated consistent with the application filed by Christian Brothers.
Like that.
It works for the second.
Okay, so first and a second. Call a question. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Poo? Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Okay, Chris, it's all yours.
Okay, under old business, we have continued discussion regarding potential aquatics facility, potential location review, and webpage introduction.
I'll, I'll note, Chris, that we don't have gobs of new information for the board tonight except to say that we're continues on all elements of, of the discussion that we've had already, including site analysis. We did have a tech staff meeting last month, or is that last week? Last month, and which staff talked through the four alternatives that you saw presented. We asked, I would say, deeper technical questions to, to ascertain whether certain sites had some critical challenges that would put them perhaps, you know, lower on the pecking order of ideal. So we worked through those and we still are gathering information and weighing that information. Sue's Parks Committee had a discussion. Did you want to talk about what you heard there?
We just had a general discussion with Park Committee. Gary's the chair, if you want to share what you...
You know, I don't, I'm not sure if anybody really on that Parks Committee was, you know, could pinpoint a specific location. I'm not sure, Sue, it's, you know, people are still trying to understand the project and what it's gonna be in the end. So there's still a lot of questions. I don't, which I think is good because people are, you know, they're not racing to a decision on this. They're really looking at what option is gonna fit. So you can probably say it better, but...
We didn't come to any conclusions. I think we're on the path that Nyla talked about a couple of meetings ago where it's like one puzzle piece at a time. Every time all of us have a conversation with anybody, it starts to become a bit more clear.
The other work we're doing at a staff level, it, as we've talked about before, is further refining the impact of operational costs and how that might relate to projection of village operational spending for other functions within the organization. And that's to work hard at getting a better answer for you on whether we feel we would find ourselves in the need for a binding referendum to exceed the levy limit. So that evaluation is underway. And I, I think with that, unless any other staff have updates, happy to open it up for questions that you might have of us.
Any questions over here? Bill, Phil? Nyla? I'll just, I'm gonna reiterate what I've said in the past. We're going through a very tedious process to make sure that we hit every detail. We had a survey that went out that we had 1,600 residents reply to. I'd like to see another 3,000 people respond because we're trying to gather all this information. One of the things that I've heard is our, our survey did not say, or give the option of saying no. You're absolutely gonna have an option to say no. That'll be when the referendum takes place. Before anybody ever says no, other than my dad, who would do it within two seconds of every question I ever had for him, you should always listen to all of the details and find out as much information possible before making that decision. So I get the people that think, I don't need a pool, I don't want a pool, but listen to what is proposed because a lot of the things we have, roads, libraries, all of our municipal things are results of things the government is doing. because a lot of the things we have, roads, libraries, all of our municipal things are results of things the government is doing. And you may all use those things, but you may not want a pool and that's okay. But at least hear what the good things and the bad things potentially are of a pool. And I shouldn't even say good or bad, but all the different items that you should take into consideration. And that includes budget, which we have to very closely look at, as Todd was bringing up right there, and how we'll look at that within where our levies are and how we're going to be able to do that. So I always look over at Renee when I talk about the pool because I know this is a, this is a big thing for her in making sure that we're going to be good financially as a community. So please keep sending information to us if you're from the public, anybody in the public, please keep sending that information. Share, Sue, same thing, Sue, in the Parks Recreation Bill, whoever, whoever it is you're comfortable sending it to, send them to that information so you can get your opinion heard. So we can try to include the things that people would want. So, all right, soapbox is over for that part. All right, let's move on unless anybody else has any comments. Nope, okay. Then, under new business, hear and discuss presentation from organizations involved in operating and managing housing program at former Baymont Hotel. Todd?
All right. And we have some guests who are joining us by Zoom today and. Tim, I might have to ask you to go and change the source on the projector so it brings up my computer. So if everybody joining us on Zoom here can bring their cameras up, we'll be putting this up onto the screen. Last, at your last meeting, you had an update from County Supervisor Tim Kiefer. Welcome back, Tim.
Yeah, good to have you.
Good to have you two meetings in a row. Looks like it's trying. Nope.
Are you casting or are you direct?
Yeah, I have, I have it direct on this guy here.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you.
Thank you, sorry about that.
No worries, you're, all good.
Sorry, guys, we're trying to just get the cast onto the screen so everybody can see you. But if I am gonna unmute here, if I could hear someone say hello? Adam? All right, good, we have audio on you as well, so great.
Which one?
Is he talking to me?
I think so.
Oh.
Are we still connected over here? Oh, this, this is disconnected here. All right, that's it. We did.
Tech training budget?
Well, we can use our funding when we renovate this room.
Yeah, the, the equipment is here. We have to make decisions for retrofitting our building and we'll get it rolling. All right. We have, we have all of you up on our screen, so just so you know, you're all here. It is going to be difficult for, for all of you to necessarily hear the questions. We'll hear you real well, but to the extent that there are questions, I'll do my best to translate that more clearly for you through Zoom, okay? But just for purposes of introductions as well, Jalatifa Joe Myers is with St. Kofa. Adam Kreitzman, obviously you know, you know Adam, our Chief of Police. Casey Becker is with Dane County. Mian Ashgar, Faez Suliman and Tony Jakaki is in person. They represent Luxcom Hotels, Luxcom, is that right?
Yes.
The hotel group that is in ownership of the former Baymont Hotel. And I believe you were operating the hotel as well when it was under the Baymont flag.
Yes.
Right, yep, okay. So that's our group with us today. When Tim was here a few weeks ago, he gave us a good presentation on county updates and brought up the operations that St. Kofa is performing at the former Baymont. The village board had a series of questions and some back and forth with Tim with a request from the board to ask the participating organizations to come and share information on what the short and long-term goals may be for the homeless housing function at the property as well as the hotel plans, short and long-term. I've had some preliminary conversations that everybody see on the, the screen here. I think they're, they're prepared to discuss and provide you information on those points and we're happy to then follow up with any other questions you have. So with that, Jalatifa, would you be interested in going first to talk about what St. Kofa is doing and who you're serving? You're on mute at the moment.
Absolutely. I do have a very short question. Would I be able to bring that up?
Yeah, let me. You should be because I think you're on as a panelist, so you should be able to bring that up.
Okay.
Can everybody hear the audio all right?
Well, I don't see anywhere that says share my screen.
Okay, let me see if I can.
If it's too, too difficult, I can just, you know, talk, but.
Well, I'd love for you to be, I'd love for you to, oh, here we go. It says all panelists who can share. You should be able to share. If you don't. Bottom center of your screen, it should say share screen.
It does not.
All right, I'm sorry, Jalatifa.
Because I don't want to pick up people's time, but yeah, so my name is Jalatifa Joe Myers. I am the founder of St. Kofa Educational Leadership United, which is a local nonprofit that is based in Summery. We have existed since 2012, but we incorporated and became a nonprofit in 2018. I myself am a local, born and raised in Wisconsin and went to grade school and college in Wisconsin. I went to Edgewood College for my undergrad in psychology and human services and my masters in, at UW Madison in social work with concentrations in school policy as well as mental health. St. Kofa Educational Leadership United has a mission to serve the community under three pillars. That is education, health, as well as the criminal justice system to work on the disparities across Wisconsin. Our services that we offer in Wanake are under our health pillar. Our house, all of our housing initiatives are under our health pillar. And the reason for that is because chronic homelessness takes thirty years off the, the average life of, average life of someone that is chronically homeless. We began doing non-congruent sheltering during the pandemic, just as lots of other agencies did. And we partnered with hotels across Dane County to try to slow the curve of the, of the pandemic COVID-19 virus spreading. And one of the most vulnerable populations around COVID-19 is, is or was and still is homeless populations. And so, you know, about halfway through the pandemic, I had been working with the Baymont Hotel as well as several other service providers. And we made an agreement that during October, November, that we would mostly serve all of our families at the, at the, then the Baymont. So we have, during the pandemic, we've had lots of accomplishments and celebrations. And that, I'm just going to really pull up on my PowerPoint really quickly just because I don't know it all by, right off the tip of my head. But I do want to share these things with you. So we provided shelter to four hundred and sixty individuals and families, that's a non-duplicated number. We provided shelter to sixty-seven families every night in 2021. And when I say sixty-seven families, that's including our site that's in Madison, not just in Wanake. We helped three hundred and sixty-one individuals that were homeless gain permanent housing in 2021. And we paid a portion of their rent and helped them stabilize. We provided a hundred and ninety welcome baskets with basic household items like cups and pans and comforters and sheets. And those were all through donations. We provided U-Haul trucks to sixty-seven individuals that had maintained a storage and needed to get their items moved to their new home. As I'm reading through these accomplishments, it just dawned on me that there's one important thing that I didn't say. How St. Kofa came to doing sheltering and all of these housing interventions, this was never a part of our business plan. A shelter was never a part of St. Kofa EOU's business plan. But as we started doing social assistance during the pandemic, homelessness was increasing across Dane County. So originally, we would be getting calls that said, you know, can you help me with my rent? Can you help me with my utilities? Can you help me with my phone bill? And we were doing things like that. And then about June, July, those calls changed. And it was literally moms on the street with their kids saying, I have no place to go. And that's how we started partnering with hotels all over Dane County. But I think that's, I, is really important to say because we developed a strategic plan around helping families find housing and shelter in August of 2020. But we had never done it before then. We were doing it in response to community need and realized that the shelters were at capacity. Tenant Resource Center was at capacity. The resources that were already existing in the community were very overwhelmed. And so, we wanted to help the system, our community, as well as vulnerable populations, which is a part of our mission. I'm going to stop there and if anybody has any questions with me, please ask.
Okay. Just for process, Chris, would you like all the speakers to share information and then open it up? Okay. And one thing I'd note, Jalatifa is working with Tim Semen and Community Development in regards to possibly locating a women's health facility where, I believe you two have connected, right? Good, good.
We did.
So that.
Can I say?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I say one more thing too, just because I heard it on the video of the last presentation? So in 2020, there were a hundred and thirty-five police calls to the Baymont. That was not under St. Kofa. That was a lot of different providers. And so, once the, we problem solved around it, myself and the owners, that number in 2021 was reduced to fifty percent. Not even fifty percent, fifty, it was reduced by fifty-four percent.
Okay, thanks Jalatifa.
And I just wanted to.
All right, appreciate that. I think, I think what I'll go to next is Luxum Hotel Group because truly the relationship, as I've come to understand it, is more established between the provider in St. Kofa and the hotel as, as the entity. Now, the county does play a role, there's, there's some funding elements and I'm going to let Casey get into that later. But now I think I'd like to turn it over to Mian Faez and Tony. I'm not sure who's going to take the lead, but.
I don't think Mian, he's actually dealing with an issue at the property right now. I don't know, do you just stop from here or do you want to stand up?
Keith, what do you?
Okay, well, my name's Tony Jakaki. I'm one of the three owners of the Luxcom Hotel property formerly Baymont. Faez Suliman is the gentleman on the screen there in the bottom right. Mian Ashgar is the other, Mian is the operating, I guess, manager, owner of the property. I was in, I got involved with the hotel about five years ago to bring in some remodeling expertise. That's kind of my background is rehabbing properties. And so, I agreed to join the partnership to do a major renovation at the property, which we completed. I don't remember if that was 2018, I think, 2017. So after that renovation, the hotel's operating, was growing, our revenue was growing, obviously. We, then our next step in early 2019 was to start planning another, a more major renovation, which we were planning to basically tear off the roof of the hotel, add a third story, add an elevator, add twenty rooms to the kind of roadside and opposite of nineteen and, and kind of bring it up to a current standard, similar to like a Holiday Inn Express, a Hampton Inn. Something that, you know, the Wanake residents and the demographics here in Wanake has changed in the last thirty years since that hotel was built in 1994. And we realize that and we wanted to bring that hotel up to, you know, what Wanake residents now want. Obviously, it's become a lot more of an affluent community and a thirty-year-old hotel isn't really where people want their family members to stay any longer. So we realized that, we wanted to take that big, major expansion. However, obviously, things changed when the pandemic hit and all of our planning and we were about to contract with an architect to work on the design and engineering work. And obviously, that all went to the wayside when the pandemic struck. Our goal for the last two years is basically just to survive and stay in business in any way we could. And, you know, we're still somewhat at the mercy of Dane County Public Health Department and, you know, what they say businesses in the county can or can't do. So as far as short-term goals, we're just trying to survive and stay in business and keep the doors open with any way we can as obviously the things pick up and the economy opens up again. You know, we're looking forward to rebranding the hotel, doing and looking at different options as far as renovations and what we can do from this point forward to, you know, get the hotel to what we want and what the village wants as well in the village. So I guess to answer the question, you know, long-term goals. You know, we had long-term goals previously, but now the last two years has really put a kibosh on that. So again, we're just looking now at different franchises that we can maybe bring in the next twelve to twenty-four months and actually become a hotel again as more events open up again and return to the area. So I guess that's kind of our long-term answer is we really don't have an answer. We'd love to have concrete, you know, a schedule as far as what we're going to do. So the program we've had with St. Kofa was a godsend for us to basically keep operating the hotel and stay in business. So now we're going to, we're looking to the county to maybe assist us in eventually when things end here officially, then we can start transitioning back to a hotel again in the next, you know, maybe twelve to twenty-four months. We're not sure. Faez, you have anything else to add?
I think that sums it all. I mean, we want to, I mean, as a business entity, we have tried our best to, you know, survive and provide, you know, services, full hospitality in Wanake. So we want to continue to do that. Like obviously with pandemic, we had to take a different course of action. Initially, when we got inquiries from other organizations to provide temporary housing, even at that time, while we were sued Baymont at that time, we still kept it open for public, but nobody was really, you know, booking rooms just because of pandemic, everybody was scared and, you know. So unfortunately, this is a timeframe, although we had mixed set of clients. In the past, we have had clients who are construction companies who have booked rooms. I mean, sports teams who'd come and continuously book for three or four days, the whole operation. But then there will, so during those times, obviously, you know, we would be in situations where we could not sell out rooms to other people. So even, even during this early time of pandemic, we had a situation where some of the rooms were obviously sent to the nonprofits and then there were some rooms still open for public, but some of those rooms were unsold. So over a period of time, St. Kofa was able to, you know, help us take over most of the rooms because we had no options but to, you know, give them whatever they were willing to take. So our goal is to ensure that, I mean, we want to open it to public as long as people are coming and the pandemic is over and we can take actions accordingly. Thank you.
Okay. Tony, do you have anything else or I know Mian's, Mian's busy, I see his camera's still on, but.
No, I'm good.
Okay. Good. Jalatifa, was there anything you wanted to add following those comments, or should I turn it over to Casey?
Um, I think going to Casey would be fine. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Casey, I'll let you introduce yourself and your role and your department. I'd note that over the past, you know, four or five months, I've had good connections with Casey. We've started to build some rapport in talking about the programs that counties offer, has offered, and I've appreciated the responsiveness. So Casey, welcome, welcome to the board meeting.
Thank you. Thanks for the kind words and thanks for inviting me to join you all tonight. My name's Dee Becker, and I'm the administrator of the Housing Access and Affordability Division in the Dane County Department of Human Services. And our division is relatively new. We were created in the 2020 county budget. And as you all know, about three months later, the pandemic started, and a good focus of our work since then has been standing up programs to assist our neighbors in need with COVID response and recovery efforts with a large focus on people who are experiencing homelessness in Dane County. Just to give you a little bit of background before I talk more about that, our division, in addition to our partnerships that we have with a lot of frontline agencies that provide supportive services in the community to prevent and homelessness, also administers the Community Development Block Grant and Home Grants for communities outside of the city of Madison and Dane County. And you all are one of our partner communities, and we're thankful for your partnership in that way as well. And then we also administer Dane County's Affordable Housing Development Fund, and that's a fund that we've had for about five years now where we partner with affordable housing developers to increase new units of affordable housing through our capital funds that we have in Dane County. We also have some responsibility in terms of partnerships related to economic development as well. We have a partnership with MadRep, and our CDC dollars also go at economic development activities as well. So, but as I had indicated, our big focus over the last two years has been COVID response and recovery. In a lot of the things that Jalatifa talked about in her opening remarks were our experience as well. Using non-congregate shelter primarily in hotels has been a pillar of our COVID response since the very beginning because our congregate shelters are not big enough to allow the number of people in need to socially distance so that we can adequately prevent exposure and spread of COVID-19 among really vulnerable folks. So the county, working with the city of Madison and Public Health Madison Dane County, and of course, our agencies that are providing frontline services and in-person services, also partnered with hotels in the area for some specific populations. Early on, we had partnered with Salvation Army to assist them in serving families experiencing homelessness. We also worked with hotels to create what we refer to as the Vulnerable Hotel Population Program. That's for people who are considered at higher risk for severe illness if they contract COVID-19, and that's informed by CDC guidelines for, for co-occurring medical conditions, people who are over age 65, people who are pregnant, things like, things of that nature. And we also support the Isolation Quarantine Center, which is a place where people who are experiencing homelessness can recover if they are positive for COVID-19 or if they're symptomatic, a place where they can go that is separate from the congregate shelter system so that they can rest and recover and, and get the care that they need. I always like to mention that the Isolation Quarantine Center is not a medical facility. It's, the intent is really for people who are, who are not extremely sick. You know, it's for people who, who are symptomatic, who are positive, but anyone who has really high medical needs is, is either in the hospital and not discharged or is connected with emergency care if they decompensate. So those hotel partnerships have been really critical, partnerships with agencies have been really critical. And at the time, we were standing up a lot of these programs and trying to get as many people connected to them as possible was when I had met Jalatifa through, I think it might have been a meeting that the United Way folks had convened, but we had become aware that Jalatifa and San Kofa, you know, you had added shelter to their mission as an agency. And because, you know, we were looking for ways to, to be able to shelter people and support those options, reached out to Jalatifa at that time to see if there was a way that we could assist. And so we, there's been a couple of, I guess, different supports. The one that we have still today is assisting with payments to the hotel to help with those room costs for the San Kofa Shelter Program. Supervisor Kiefer also might have mentioned the last meeting that we had a CBPG contract as well. And I certainly don't want to speak for Jalatifa, but I know that her agencies received other, other grants and contracts and things like that over the course of 2021 to assist with hotel sheltering too because that need has been so great in our community. So I, I will stop there except to, I mean, you mentioned it, at one point in time with our Vulnerable Population Hotel Program, with assisting with family sheltering and some of those other programs, there was close to 400 people who, who were in hotel shelter, or I'm sorry, not 400, a little over 300 people who were in hotel shelter during the height of the pandemic. As hotel rooms have, have gotten to be more in demand, our program is smaller now, we have about 100 rooms for our Vulnerable Population Hotel Program. We just recently got through the Omicron surge that we've all been feeling and particularly among people, our neighbors experiencing homelessness. And at one point in time, there was well over 100 people in the Isolation and Quarantine Center Program recovering. Those numbers have declined significantly in the last week and a half, thankfully, as that surge seems to at least be receding a little bit among the families that we serve. So now I will stop. Thank you very much again for the time and for letting me talk a little bit.
Thanks, Casey. I know one, one clarification I'd asked you, the source of funding for the payments you make to the hotel to cover room costs, that's an ARPA? Is that an ARPA source or one of the-
Correct. That's American Rescue Plan. Initially, it was CARES funding when we had the CARES funding from the, from the Trump Administration stimulus. And now we have American Rescue Plan locally dollars that support the activities.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Thank you all for being, presenting and sharing. I do want to note also, on the virtual room with us is Chief Kreitzman. I don't think Chief has plans to present anything. He's here to answer questions that you, the board, might have for him. I'd also note, I know he loves being put on the spot, Randy Guttenberg, the school district superintendent, is in the gallery tonight. I know he's, Randy's been part of some conversations with this group here on the virtual call with us. We've had, we've had good learning opportunities together over the past several weeks. And I guess if there's questions about, you know, the engagement with the schools in relation to the population served at the hotel, I suppose Randy would be willing to share if that was, if that was requested of the board. So with that, I guess I'll, I'll pause, Chris, and see if you wanted to field questions.
Absolutely. So, board members, I'll start with you this time, Bill.
And I know you guys came here well, but again, I'll repeat the questions so you're, so you're aware.
So I, what I heard is the hotel, the shelter is planning to convert back to a hotel in a timeline of about a month, about 12 months, is that correct or?
So in case you didn't hear, this is, oh, I'm sorry, trustee Bill Rannam asked about clarification on the timing on transitioning of the hotel back to public, public service as a hotel, I suppose?
Yeah. Stay in a hotel, I guess.
Tony, did you want to address that?
Yeah, I mean, we don't have any specific timeline at this point. You know, there's currently families that we're serving and have the property. We're probably looking at, you know, releasing some of the rooms as that demand for the families subsides. And that's what kind of we were talking about in our last meeting is that, just that, you know, we really don't know yet.
How many families are you serving right now?
I don't know. Jalatifa might be able to answer that.
How many families are now served at the, at the Wanaquie Hotel, Jalatifa?
So right now, 37 families are at the hotel. We do have a 90-day program where families are able to stay with us up to 90 days, and we're helping them to find housing as we don't want people to exit back to homelessness once they leave with us. The timeline for us as being in the sheltering business as San Kofa really has to do with the pandemic. And as we see needs increase or decrease, it heavily impacts our decision-making. So right now, the data is driving our decision-making, and we look at that data weekly to see what the forecast is for COVID-19, a morcorn, or, you know, whatever is going on in the community, as well as, you know, future timelines in which we would, you know, pivot out of this service.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you know how, do you know how many kids are in school?
The question again from trustee Bill Rannam is how many kids are in this Wanaquie school system?
I think there's two families that attend Wanaquie School District. But we do have, most of our population that we have at the shelter has children under the age of five. And the reason for that is that our first priority is for families that have children under the age of five. And much of that has to do with how homelessness will critically impact their development. In addition to knowing that 75% of the homeless population is Black women and children, and that there's also a disparity we hold in Wisconsin on child mortality rates and children dying before the age of two. And so those are some of the health indicators that drive our service as well as how we put together our programming.
Okay. Thanks. I saw Randy nodding a little bit. Are you in agreement with that information? Do you have more specifics on the school population?
That's about right. I think we have, we have some kids in our 4K program all the way up to like fourth grade. I'm not aware of any students that maybe are beyond that primarily.
I think it's two families.
I think you're right, Jalatifa. So it's generally, I think, about eight kids potentially. I think it's in, from our 4K program all the way up to like fourth grade.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nyla?
I have a question pertaining to their children's education. When a family leaves the shelter, what, where do the children go for education at that point?
Yep. So when a family leaves the shelter, hopefully, they leave into housing. We do have a 86% rate of families leaving the shelter and entering into housing, but if they do enter into permanent housing, we would want them to enroll in the school that is in their community, wherever they are moving to.
Thank you.
And just, you know, the question came from trustee Nyla Frye.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I add to that, Todd?
Yep, go ahead.
There is something called the McKinney-Vento Act, which allows anyone who's homeless, classified as homeless, which means that they don't have a permanent home, so it could be staying at the shelter or living with another family, allows them to choose their district of residence. So you could have somebody who is living in Wanaquie and be classified as homeless but attend a school elsewhere in another community, and that's allowed by state law. So when you take a look at just the homeless population, even though it can have a residence or a place where they're lying their head at night, doesn't necessarily mean that's where they would be residing school-wise. But as Jalatifa said, as they would find more permanent housing in a place where they would be located, then they would attend within that residence area.
That brought up another question. So then how is, if children who are considered homeless can go from, to a different school district than where they're sleeping, how is transportation provided?
That's in agreement, Nyla, between the, the school districts.
Okay. Thank you.
Jalatifa, did you want to chime in?
I did. So, so when a family becomes homeless, they can choose to stay in the district where the child was attending when they became homeless. So there are many families that we have at the shelter that maybe they are staying in the shelter in Wanaquie, but they're attending school in Stoughton, they're attending school in Madison, they're, wherever they became homeless at. And then the school district helps with transportation to be able to provide that consistency. But then once they are, find permanent housing, they are expected to enroll in their district where they live.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Phil, any question?
Sure.
Aaron?
I know.
Yeah?
Tony, how many rooms total are in the hotel building?
It's currently a 38-room hotel.
All right. Thank you.
Gary?
Yeah, I guess maybe one thing, and maybe to Casey, what is the, I mean, we talked about, you know, the short-term plans, what is, what is the county's short-term and long-term plans for this program?
So that was trustee Gary Hersberg. Casey, did you hear the question? The question was for you as to what can you share of the county's long, short and long-term goals?
Related to hotel sheltering?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Well, the, unfortunately, the American Rescue Plan dollars that we received are our one-time funds. Currently, the, the plan and our projection is that we would end our financial support for hotel sheltering at the end of June of 2022. So we are just starting to talk internally about what does that look like for our congregate shelter system, which as Jalatifa mentioned, is pretty, pretty, pretty full already, and what sorts of partnerships can we put in place? What sort of supports can we put in place? And working really closely with Public Health Madison Dane County to, to, to take a look at our congregate shelter spaces, see if there's something that can be done to create isolation space on-site, to create more social distancing on-site. So a lot of those conversations have, have started. They've, they, this is not the first time we were talking about the hotel shelter program ending. Last year, we thought that the hotel shelter program was going to end about two different times. Once, in the summer, it was extended for a couple more months, and then the Delta variant emerged, which really brought a lot of uncertainty at the time and led the county to make the decision to extend hotel shelter through the end of 2021 and then through the June of 2022 of this year. So there's a number of people who have exited housing, or exited from hotels into housing across all programs that have been able to use, use hotel partnerships as a really critical housing stability piece. And that's been, that's been wonderful. It's definitely been a silver lining, and it's helped a lot of folks experiencing homelessness. But we would also anticipate a lot of households will be returning to congregate shelter. And so having a lot of those planned for discussions right now about what does that look like, what will the, the impact be? How do we prepare people experiencing homelessness and have those conversations with them? And also, how do we work with our agencies that are doing the work every day and, and serving our neighbors in need so that we can identify what resources they, they might need for the spaces that they currently use? As you all know, our congregate shelters are primarily in Madison. The city of Madison is also doing a lot of work to look for- The city of Madison is also doing a lot of work to look for a new permanent location for the men's overnight shelter. And we, the county works really closely with staff at the city of Madison to talk about facilities. And we learned a lot of lessons during the pandemic about shelter design and programs. And so we're, in those conversations, a lot of the lessons we learned during the pandemic will inform that planning too.
It's, it's difficult, I think, in Wannakee. I mean, one of my big concerns has always been is we have one hotel in Wannakee. You know, if you go to DeForest and Windsor, I think there are four hotels. You know, Sun Prairie, Middleton, they all have multiple hotels. So their residents have choice. In Wannakee today, if your grandparents are in town, there's a, there's tournaments at the high school during the holidays. Families don't have a place to stay in Wannakee. So they leave Wannakee and they go to Middleton, or they go to Sun Prairie to stay overnight, and they probably spend money in restaurants, and they're not spending in Wannakee. We've increased our police staffing in the last couple of years. I think this has had an impact on Wannakee. We've lost our hotel tax. We've had to fund things out of our general fund that were, used to be paid out of our hotel tax. So as a community, it's had a great impact on us. So, that's my concern from a, a short and a long-term standpoint is I want to get back where people in this community have a hotel that their parents and their grandparents and kids who come to town have a place where they can stay and, you know, enjoy Wannakee, spend money at our restaurants, help our economy. So, that's my comments.
That, that was trustee Gary Hertzberg with a couple other comments. Not a question per se.
No.
Did you want?
It's been my concern for a long time.
Okay. Does anybody care to follow up on that?
I will a little bit, if that's okay. Not that I have control of the powers that be. But looking at hotel sheltering ending in June, I know one of the things that myself and the owners have been talking about is that the hotel will have to be rehabilitated. The hotel was never built to accommodate people living in it. You know, usually, people come, they spend a couple days, and they go. And so there's quite a few things that will need to be rehabilitated for the hotel to get back to just a normal hotel running business. And I don't want to speak for any of you guys, Faez and Man and Tony. I just wanted to put that out there because I know that something needs discussed.
Well, I think probably I could just add a few perspectives to things. I mean, overall, the hotel industry is struggling, I mean, since pandemic. And it might take a year or two to actually go back to the same pace as it was before, pandemic, when the revenue was stable and people were traveling and so on. In fact, so the hotel industry generates like star reports with the franchise organizations providers, which shares details on, you know, how hotels are doing across the board, throughout the city, how's the market reacting to situations. So in Madison area and around, I think, more than fifty-five percent of the hotels are down and struggling. And they are not in a situation where they can survive. Now, we took this hotel back in two thousand twelve. And when we got it, it was in a very terrible state. Unfortunately, the Wannakee community and anything we can attract in this five to ten mile radius did not really support that hotel to survive. So we had to spend a lot of money to bring it up to a certain level when we switched bay mode because we don't have our own punch list. And after that also, we were struggling to get the right amount of traffic for us to generate revenue and sustain. So, the whole thing here is, we have two challenges. We are getting limited, you know, business from Wannakee area. Most of the people who are from Wannakee or want to leverage the hotel in Wannakee is a very small percentage. Lot of traffic we get is to the pass-through, so people passing by. One, like Madison or wherever, I think we have a lot of those kind of, you know, guests visiting our hotels. In addition to that, sometimes if there is a project going on around and the crew wants to stay because we are able to provide competitive rates, then we have seen those kind of things. Epic used to have these huge conferences, you know, that would bring in business to actually not just entire city of Madison, but also, you know, all the suburban hotels in the area. So if we, I know we definitely, the hotel was built to support the city or the village of Wannakee. But in order for us to, you know, sustain and survive, we want to ensure that we are getting the right amount of traffic. Now, when we were buying the hotel, we were given a lot of hopes that there was some sort of a sporting complex that would be coming in Wannakee, which was right next to North Gare or some area right behind the hotel. That project did not really, you know, come to fruition. So we were hoping that we might get more business from there. So in addition, so for us, it is not a challenge to open the hotel back to business. Maybe we can bring in more franchisee, we can put more money. We've been putting more money every year to, you know, keep it updated and sustained so that we can make sure that we are meeting the standards, you know, the franchises want to offer. So, so from that perspective, we want to know like what the village of Wannakee is bringing to the town where we can make good amount of revenue, not just to survive, because we are also in the business to make money, not just, you know, survive. At some point, we don't want to feel like, okay, we are just having this hotel as a charity, but essentially, you know, as a way to survive and make our own living. I mean, if you talk to the village financier, in the past, we have struggled to make our, you know, room tax payments. You know, we have struggled to make our mortgage payments over a period of last, since two thousand twelve. So we have gone through a fair share of challenges to survive and continue supporting the guests in the area. So there are definitely a lot of challenges we have been facing. The old owner actually who sold us, they actually went bankrupt. And then we, so we bought the hotel from the bank because we thought we were getting a good deal. But they were, we were also given a lot of hopes that, okay, Wannakee is growing, Wannakee is getting the sports complex and so many other things. But actually, all those things did not materialize. And so, you know how we have come thus far? And definitely when we engaged, Tony, I mean, he brought a lot of, you know, fresh perspective to things. He helped us, you know, rehab the hotel. And so we definitely, and the economy was likely getting better, so our revenue numbers jumped. But prior to that, we were definitely struggling. So we want to know from, you know, the Chamber of Commerce or the Economic Development Department, what is it that, let's say if you want to pour another half a million or a million into this hotel, what is it that can help us survive in Wannakee from your perspective?
I think, I think those are good questions, which I are probably best taken, best taken when we can think about programs and concepts. I would note that, I mean, our population in two thousand twelve, it was twelve-five, and now we're, we're, we've surpassed, I would, I would speculate over fifteen thousand now. So we are seeing the growth. We're almost out of industrial park land. We've seen successful expansion in the past couple of years. So I hope, I hope our economy, the broader economy, which could present an opportunity for your hotel, is heading in a direction that can be of greater support in the, in the future for you. Sorry, back to you, Chris.
Do you want to say something else?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Is there anything, assuming for San Copa and that village, or we can help connect things that aren't programs, things that they need from us? Library or any like transportation, things like that that aren't there? Because of where we are, we're not, you know, on the bus line, like?
Yeah, Jalatifa, this is trustee Erin Moran, asked the question about, basically, I'll summarize. Are there, are there service gaps that your participating families are experiencing where the local community can be of greater support?
I guess like uniquely that Wannakee, we don't, we're not providing or, or slowing someone's transition out of this, temporary housing.
Did you catch that, Jalatifa?
I did.
Yeah, are, are there specific things that your families there are not able to receive locally that are preventing your program from being successful for your families? Are there local, are there local services or support that could be of help?
Definitely, you know, I think families are starting all over. And so, you know, we talked about the welcome baskets that we give to families to make them feel at home. We also give welcome baskets to families as they leave into their new housing development. Living on the streets or in your car is a very stressful event. So being able to have ways that they can access telehealth, even though we offer telehealth, just being able to have enough devices where someone can go into the conference room and meet with a therapist over telehealth. There's just basic, you know, basic things that they need. They're starting all over from everything.
I would note, Erin, that Wannakee Neighborhood Connection has been aware of the hotel and the families living there and has been there to be of support. The Wannakee Food Pantry has, has been aware of the needs. And Randy at the school district and his personnel, through other, through different, different departments in the school district have also provided supports. And we've, our efforts over the past month has been to improve communications between the people you see on the call here, so that we could be in a really good position to provide those supports.
So, this is President Zellner. Just a couple, couple observations, questions from my perspective. And the first thing I want to do is, Jalatifa, I hope I'm saying that right. And Casey, thank you for the heavy lifting work that you have to do, not just in Wannakee, but across our county. That's important for people to recognize. And I, I hope you didn't feel that this was some sort of inquisition that you were facing tonight, and that you're, you're welcome here in Wannakee. I think the hardest part for, for me with all of this was maybe the communication on the front side. So when a, a location is picked for this, I was caught unaware that this was taking place. And I don't know if the school district was reached out to beforehand. So when your agreements are being made to go into a location, is there an outreach program that you have within to let the local municipal and school district know that this is taking place so we can prepare? Or maybe now we know we need to prepare into the future for this type of situation? Obviously, you know, once or twice in our lifetime, we've, we've seen pandemics that have come for us. But is there, is there an outreach program to let us know so we're not caught unaware? And of course, there's, the county is going to be the first to know. That's who's organized this. And we just were caught off budget, we, we have budgets to work with, and we want to be there to help people. That's, you know, what we're here for. Our schools are designed to serve our children and our youth to make sure that they're getting educations. Whether they're coming from out of town or not, we want to have that as an ability for a student if they need it. But my concern with all of this is just the process on the front side of this and educating us so we know how to be prepared for this. And how you choose your sites and making sure that we know so we can prepare accordingly. So that tax budget, you know, that we talked, that Gary, trustee Hertzberg mentioned, yes, we, we do have that as part of our budget, but it was never a specific thing that it was going to be used for. It was just part of our general, which we could use for, it's our Chamber of Commerce, things like that. But it wasn't anything that was specifically designated for, off-budget, so to speak. Is that correct, Renee?
You're talking about the room tax?
The room tax.
Um, no, that does have some specific things under the, the law that it has to be used for in terms of?
Under the law, yes. But we don't have something designated within our budget.
Other than the, the contribution to the chamber and joining?
Correct, correct. But that's not a guarantee.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. So, I'm, I'm just, and that was just one example. And our residents, I, I hear what trustee Hertzberg is also saying with regards to our residents wanting a hotel. Our residents don't use the hotel a lot. It's the guests that are coming for our residents and our business community. Our business community is what we hear from, that we, we need to have an opportunity with hotel. And this particular time, we don't have that. So when I heard from Faez talking about what we can do to help them, we're absolutely interested in helping them. And that's something that with an outreach to us, it's not necessarily just your hotel. There's other hotels that reach out to us to come to Wannakee as well, that we've been talking to. So with that in mind, I just kind of want to have a better understanding of the process on the front side and that notifications that we can get.
Can I speak to that a little bit?
Absolutely.
Yep, and just, you know, that was, that was village president Chris Zellner who posed the question.
Okay, thank you. So what I want to say is that I think everyone involved here with serving the community in the way that we have, we've been building our wings on the way down. It wasn't a comprehensive plan that we sat down and figured out and weighed all these options. As I was explaining how San Copa came into non-congregant sheltering based on need, these were things that were happening fast as we responded to the community as this pandemic was going on, as a stay-at-home order was going on, and trying to be as, as responsive as possible, not only us as a nonprofit, but nonprofits all over Dane County. And I wouldn't say that Dane County planned this out. I think they were just like us, building their wings on their way down. And they're like, oh, okay, you're doing this, how can we support you? You're doing this, how can we support you? There is a coalition called the House of Homeless Services Consortium. So definitely where people were providing non-congregant sheltering was definitely discussed a lot throughout that group. And that is for people all over Dane County. There also was a huge need, you know, we're based in Sun Prairie, but there was a huge need, you know, in rural, in the rural parts of Dane County that had not been addressed because all the sheltering is in the city of Madison. And there's been several pop-up shelters in rural Dane County based on, you know, the need that was being presented. I really apologize for not coming to the board and explaining any of the plans that we had. I think they were less plans and there were more reactions. Reactions to what was happening. Even San Copa taking over, you know, the building and being the only provider, that was reactions. There was like four providers in there. We had, we, San Copa only had ten rooms. And, you know, Man and, you know, his partner, he was like, okay, our staff is not ready to be social workers. And now they're having to be social workers. What are we going to do? And because San Copa was spending so much time out there, they were like, well, you guys, we see you guys all the time. You're the people that come check on your clients. You know, can you use more space here versus using ten, twenty other hotels? And that's what we were doing. And that's what we were doing. And so I definitely understand the frustration of not knowing what was happening in your community, and I apologize for that, any role that I had in that. But I just want you to know that we were approaching a pandemic. No one knew what to do, no one knew what to do, and we were responding, and it felt like we were always behind in responding, but we were responding as quickly as possible. So we might not have followed the rules or the etiquette of bringing a new business into your community, and I apologize to your community, and I promise I will go through the right channels. But that is outside, that's not, and I guess that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thanks, Jalatifa.
And thank you for those comments. It's, it's really just, I'm just looking at how do we make sure we have something set up in the future to make sure that the communications are open with the local government? Because as you just said, we could have been there as a partner to help too, but we didn't even know what to help, or that we were even potentially needing to help. So, very good. I think, I want to thank all of you for, for coming tonight, sharing this with us, and keep up your good work that you're doing.
Village president just thanked all of you for your participation tonight, and thumbs up and wish you the best as you continue your work.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you for listening to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. All right, bye, everybody.
All right. Our next item, discuss and take action on strand task order 20.
I just got to do one thing before I leave. You guys need a new flag. Lucky, I have it in my car. Look at the difference in color. Sandwich, give me a.
That's nice. That's nicely done.
Look at the difference. I was like, what is this? So, there you go, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
That one doesn't have tassels.
Well, yeah, but it's actually the color blue. The tassel's just from the thing. Oh, it's just the tassel from the thing, yeah. I'm going to give this to you, Todd, because you do need to iron it a little bit. I'm sure you can do that. Thank you very much.
All right. So, thank you. Okay, so we are discussing take action on strand task order 2201 for design and construction related services for 2022 business park improvements.
Yeah, very briefly. This is a, a task order associated with, as Todd mentioned a few minutes ago, not much land being available in the business park. So MLG has, has contacted Strand to undertake some work association with the extension of Frank H Street, and the cost associated with the task order would be passed through to the developer, MLG. And because of that, excuse me, staff is recommending approval, however, a modification to the recommended motion, which is that the motion to approve strand task order not to exceed 124 to, subject to an agreement with MLG for reimbursement of said cost.
Jeff, do you have any comments?
Yeah, like Tim and Todd said tonight, the remaining space in the village's business park would be served by this work, both sewer water and street extensions, and also the stormwater management. There will be some revisions to the floodway that occurs on that property in order to accommodate this. So part of this task order is to actually study that, determine how we can effectively manage the water coming through there so that we don't increase flood levels upstream. So that's part of this work. And we've, we've met with MLGM, the village jointly, on, on this work, and I think everybody, the, the developers in agreement with the cost, it's just a matter of making sure the village has an agreement with the developers. Four star, earnest.
Does everybody know what we're talking about, Frank H Street? Just want to make sure all the board members are good, understanding? Okay, good. As far as the cost, do we have any, anything saying that we aren't going to be bearing this cost? I mean, I know it's this dollar amount and the, MLG isn't going to be paying it, I'm just assuming there's something in here that shows that somewhere. I just didn't see it.
That's not included in the packet, that's what, the reason for the amended motion, subject to that agreement with MLG.
Got it.
So our, our village attorney would be looking at that.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to make the motion to approve the strand task order 2201 not to exceed $124,200.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded by Nyla Frye. Any other comments?
We, we, you got to add that extra part. That's the important part.
It's not on that.
So Tim could read it again?
Yeah. Yeah, so, subject, in addition, subject to the agreement with MLG for reimbursement of said cost.
Okay, I'm good with that? Natalie, good with that? Okay, any other comments? Call the question, if you'd favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I just have it. Next we have discuss and take action on draft term sheet between the village of Wanakee and Durst property owners related to potential land swap and trail improvements. Brian?
So I can talk about, I mean, we can have as much of this discussion in open session as you'd like. If we start to get into something where you want to talk, go into closed session, then we would have to read the closed session portion of the agenda and make the motion. And, and my recommendation is going to be at some point in time to go into closed session, and maybe rather quickly, but let me give you a little bit of an overview. And I know that we had a public comment tonight on this item, and as much as I appreciate that public comment regarding fencing associated with the trail, we're not here tonight to really discuss the components of the trail and whether or not the village board is going to move ahead with the trail. I know that, that's, I believe that's been something that's been discussed at the park commissions before. I believe that the village board in the past approved, and we've done a study to kind of determine, okay, if we're going to have a pedestrian and bike trail in this area, you know, where would it be located, what would the potential cost be? And, and that's all important for purposes, and that background is important for purposes of what our discussion of item is tonight. But one of the things that we know is that if, if we are going to put a trail in this area, we're likely, likely going to have to go at least on some portion of the Durst property to have that trail. We also know that right now, the village owns land that is adjacent to the Durst property, and there, there's a fence on, on that land right now that the Dursts have put up, that shouldn't be there. And so that's kind of what started this whole discussion, or at least was a part of this discussion, is that fence shouldn't be there, but we also understand that we might want to have a trail coming through this area. So does it make sense for us to step back, not look back as to what's happened, look forward as to what's best for the village? Do we want to have at least some type of agreement with the Durst property owners to contemplate a trail moving forward? And if we're going to do that, then as part of that discussion process, they would like to, you know, the land that has the fence on it right now, they would like that land to be conveyed from the village to the Durst. Well, in order that, for that to happen, this, all this land back there is open space, and we own it, and it's subject to what I'm going to generally call a deed restriction with the DNR. So when the land was conveyed to the village, it was made clear that it needs to be used for open space. And if we were to ever convey the property, essentially, we have to have a swap. If we're going to convey some of our land that is subject to this DNR restriction, then whatever land that we would get as part of that swap is also going to have to be open for the public, and it's going to be subject to DNR approval. So if you look at the term sheet that is back at the end of your packet, that's what, that term sheet has been shared with the Durst property owners. It contemplated this concept of a land swap, but the most important first step of that process is, we're going to have to identify the potential land that would be swapped. We're going to have to do appraisals that would be approved by the DNR as, as part of this process. Nobody would be bound to do anything, I mean, it's going to be kind of a step-by-step process, but there are costs associated with it. And if you look at the term sheet that was included in your packet, one of the things that you'll see is there's a cost-sharing mechanism in a process that village staff had identified. So we have shared that term sheet with the Dursts. They have come back to village staff with some, I would say, alternative proposed conditions that, and that's, that's what we would be discussing in closed session, is to the extent that we're going to have an, an agreement with the Dursts that would contemplate particularly the process for getting appraisals with the DNR and how to share those costs, it's those terms and conditions that I, my recommendation is that we discuss in closed session. Now, I can try to answer any questions that you might have prior to going to closed session, if that's what you do, but that's, that's kind of the background information, and that's the focus of the discussion for the closed session, would be the terms and conditions related to the term sheet.
Hey, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
If I remember correctly, funds have been approved to look into this matter. Where are we with using those funds, and has there been a study pertaining to any of this?
Yeah, the, the, the critical piece of information that we needed from a study was several things, but at this point in terms of cart and horse, we needed to know exactly the acreage to identify for appraisal purposes. And we do have the results of that study, we know those acreage numbers, and that, that's, that is then part of the appraisal process. It's, it's, it's not two acres for two acres, so to speak, either, because the DNR's expectation is that these are like-valued properties. So it's, it's an interesting moving target, both the acreage is contemplated, as well as the unique value of each property that has to play out to these like valuations. So we do have the information, and to the extent that we can share that now, I guess, Brian?
Yeah, I mean, the, the study is a public study. So I mean, there's nothing confidential about the study itself. I do agree with Todd that the, what's, what's the most relevant aspect, well, for purposes of the term sheet, one of the relevant aspects is how would we share costs? Because I, at least from the village's staff's perspective, this is something that should be a cost sharing. It shouldn't be something that the village should have to pick up, because if we do go through with this process, there is going to be a benefit to the property owner, that benefit being, there is going to be a certain amount of land that would be conveyed to the property owner. But again, I don't want to get caught up in, it, it is a valuation issue for the DNR. It's not necessarily, oh, if we give you two acres and you give us two acres, then we're done. It's what is the value of that's being transferred? So theoretically, it could be, the village provides X number of acres, and then the Dursts provide Y, and maybe we get a little bit less, but if it works for the village and the DNR approves it, and it has a matching value, and, and there's a public benefit from it, but that's essentially the, we've started the process with the question that you've asked, Nyla, regarding the study, and this is a sense of, the next step in the process is, are we going to go ahead with some type of evaluation appraisal process that would be subject to DNR approval as the next step of the process? And that's really the, when you get into the cost sharing and what would go into the agreement, that's where we have a little bit of a, we've reached some common ground, but we still have a little bit of this dispute maybe with the property owner.
So then, the funds that were allotted for what we've done, are they all spent?
The man who worked the study for us is in the room. Hey, Ken.
There are a few thousand dollars left that we didn't, we came in on our budget. We, I'm available for questions and, you know, interaction with what's left, but we have a few thousand more.
Thank you.
Brian, I'm trying to stay and not get in trouble, so.
Well, I mean, I guess, look, we always have, you always have the ability, I'm just, I want to bring up the exact language, but, and on the agenda, one of the things that we always, this may be a situation where you come out and you have a discussion in open session, I'm not saying that you're going to, but it may be helpful to move your discussion forward for me to share kind of the, the terms and conditions discussion in closed session, for us to debate the terms and conditions, then it'll be up to you. At that point, if you want to, you can come back into open session and have further discussion, or you may decide not to. But if, if, I mean, I've, I think I've given the overview and, and kind of of what, of how I think we got here, and I just, I don't want us to get lost, and I don't want the public to think that this is going to be a discussion on whether or not we're going to build a trail. That's, that's an open session discussion. The discussion tonight is simply going to be, we have a property owner that we're potentially going to work with, we provided a term sheet that's in the packet, we've received a response to the term sheet, and now I want to be able to discuss the terms and conditions that they're proposing back to the village in, at least in an initial closed session discussion.
And until those are settled?
We can't really move forward.
Yeah, the point of discussing the merits of a trail, one way or another, it doesn't make sense. That's the cart after the horse.
I'll move to go in closed session.
I'll second.
But we, and then somebody has to read the language.
That would be me.
It'd be Chris.
Okay. The village board may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin statute 19.851E for the purpose of delivering or negotiating the purchasing of public property, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The village board may reconvene in open session and discuss and take actions on the subject matter discussed in closed session. So we have a motion and a second, and then we'd have our vote call vote, please.
Sure. Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Tim Kaufman?
Yes.
Erin Moran?
Yes.
Chris Zellner?
Yes.
Phil Rannam?
Yes.
Phil Willens?
Yes.
Nyla Frye?
Yes.
And I, I note that we, 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 Brian and I expect to get, receive guidance from the village board during closed session in relation to negotiation of the term sheet. I don't think that would necessarily mean that that would be announced in open session. Is that, is that correct, Brian? Do you expect an open session?
I, I'll be honest, I, I don't know if we're going to go back. I think it's really going to, it's going to depend, I think, on how you all react to the terms and conditions as to whether or not you're going to want to have any further open session.
And I'm just trying to advise the public on what to or not to expect in open session.
So, so since the public is all leaving, I'm just going to point out, I can, I think I can say this, because this is not regarding that, yes or no?
Right.
So we put a letter out to all of our new residents that come in, Todd and I do, which kind of highlights Wanakee, and we also have it in Spanish on the backside now, so we've been moving forward with all these things, which is good, it's part of our plan.
Do you sign your name in Spanish?
I don't sign my name in Spanish, I sign it how I know how to sign it. So, all good.